Ready? You ready? I'm back. Last time, over here is 2020. Okay, and now I'm back, a replacement. Okay, our current mayor currently in Chicago, in the DMC conference. And so I have this glory today to see everybody. So anyway, okay, good evening. Welcome to our August 20th, 2024 city council meeting. It's right now is 7/11. 7/11, meeting is now in session. Okay, tonight, our invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez of Amazing Love Ministry, and the Councilwoman Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Legion. All rise please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, remember the words of King Solomon of all, that by the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted. So we ask your blessing upon our city. We ask your blessing upon, Father, all the city council and all those that work in authority in this city. Heavenly Father, we pray your blessing upon our police officers and first responders. Keep them safe, Father. We pray your blessings upon our schools as our children have begun to get back to school. Bless their administrators, bless their teachers, and may our schools continue to be safe havens. Bless our neighborhoods, Father, bless them free. Father of violence and crime in the streets, may our streets continue to be safe to walk in at night. And heavenly Father, we pray that you bless the families of our city. And if there be any family going through crisis or suffering loss, we pray your comfort upon them. Now bless this meeting, Father. Bless all the businesses that will be conducted. I pray that it be conducted honorably, with wisdom, Father, and respect. God bless America, and God bless the great city of West Covina, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please follow my lead, and gentlemen, can you please remove your caps, put your right hand over your heart, and be after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat, please.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Councilman Cantos?
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
President.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Yep.
And our mayor is out this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Assistant City Clerk. Okay, and city attorney, is there anything to be reported out of a close session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we are going to go to presentation, certificate of recognition honoring, okay, West Covina American Little League 2024 District 19 champion. Okay, and the city council is honored to recognize a 2024 District 19 champion. Okay, 14 have brought home banners, okay, a testament to their dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship. This achievement highlight the spirit and determination of this young athlete who have strive tirelessly to represent our community with honor and glory. Now, certificate will be presented to the athlete. So, good job. And I want to give this glory to our beloved, okay, Councilman Cantal. He is the person set up this recognition, so I want to invite him to come down with me to present this wonderful event for all these. I think we broke the record. We have a 70, okay, and a recognition certificate for all the kids. So meaning what? And the whole day, our staff's busy printing all the certificates for all the kids. We love you guys, so that's why we don't mind, but we want to make sure, okay, we are all here to give you all the glory. Okay, Councilman Cantal, would you please? You want to come with me, or you can go from this side?
I can go the other side.
Let me take you down.
Testing.
Can I have my script?
Four pages.
Can I have Emma?
Emma?
Emma, would you come down to, next to us? Yeah, come over here. Okay, here, I want to have Councilman Cantal to say something about this outstanding team, okay, and then I will give you the mic to say something about how glory about all these children. Okay, so I know, relax, okay. Don't pass out yet, after we're done, okay. Go ahead, Councilman Cantal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem, and hello, you guys. It is so wonderful to get to be with all of you. We are so happy that all of you here are here this evening. And for all of you who are our athletes as part of West Covina American Little League, congratulations. All of you who are players on, within each division, you must recognize how proud of you we all are. Our entire city backs you a billion percent. When you look around you, you have your coaches, you have your amazing families, and you have those in leadership with the Little League, and you have our city. And tonight, with all of you being here, we have done this for a specific reason. It isn't just to recognize how you are all already winners because of working so hard. It is also to send you guys the message that we love you and that we are proud of you, and congratulations for all the hard work that you have done. You guys are famous, you're going to be on TV tonight. So just in closing, because I'm not going to take up any more time, I just wanted to tell you, all of us here, when we see you out there, we're at your games, we cheer for you, and that winning spirit that you have, it is something that represents West Covina well with all that you have done. So everybody, congratulations again.
Good job, Ollie. Now you understand why I invited him. He can speak good, okay? I cannot do that. He can be a congressman in the future. So Emma, you want to say something?
I just want to say congratulations to all the kids that made it, and then also to all the parents, because that's a huge commitment for you guys as well, and thank you for making our league so fabulous.
So, now, we're going, is on? Okay, now we're going to start the recognition with each of the player come up to get your glory. We're going to give you a certificate. You can hang in your bedroom to see this is your achievement, so you know, West Covina City proud of you, we want to support you always. So let's go to the first one.
First one, starting with Gabriel. Gabriel Apodaca. Mason Beans, Mason. Go ahead, Mason. Mason, Anthony Encinas. Noah Gada. Noah. Andrew Heredia. Julian Leon. Derek Lirvano. Benjamin Martinez. Max McDonald. Roman Padilla. Julian Roboletto. Manager Mike Rodriguez. Coaches Rob McDonald. Miguel Roboletto. Richard Leon. And William Martinez. He's not here. And we have team parent Gina Rodriguez. Gina? Yes. Gina Rodriguez.
And maybe the team leader, who is the team leader? Somebody want to represent a group, say something? Mike, you want to say something?
Just very proud of the boys, putting their effort and giving me 110%. My coaching staff, awesome coaching staff in Little League, I believe, and all over in District 19. And especially to the parents for being patient with me, with all those practices we had. I just want to say, everybody, thank you, and thank you for this honor tonight. It really means a lot to just not me and the coaches, but to the boys as well. Thank you.
We are going to present to second group, okay, and we're starting with Giovanni.
Giovanni Cruz. David Dominguez. David Dominguez. Nicholas Escobida. Jalen Fletas. Carlos Garcia. Diego Gonzalez. Andrew Martinez. Daniel Martinez. Santiago Montez. Noah Ornelles. And Jason Portillo. Manager Andrew Martinez. Coaches Edgar Escobio. Manny Gallegos. William Martinez. John Hadley. And team parent Brittany Gallegos.
And who want to represent this group to say something? Who, okay, okay, and you are the ego, right?
Yes, my name is Aigo. First of all, I want to thank the league for the support that they gave us, and I want to thank the parents, and then, most importantly, I want to thank the players for allowing us to coach them and for us to be able to mentor them. Proud of you guys for what you guys done this year, and hopefully we could keep this winning tradition at West Covina going. Thank you.
Good job. Give that another hand. Thank you so much. Good job. Good job, good job. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to number three group, okay, and go ahead.
Eight, nine, and 10 All-Star Team. Mayor Protem, Derek Castaneda. Mateo Castanora. Roman De Lengas. Landon Gomez. Bo Jenkins. Josiah Martinez. Gerald Prager. Eric Rafael. Noah Sanchez. Nixon Swab. David Silva. Bryce Stingerland. We have manager Matt De Lingus. Coaches David Silva. Kyle Strangeland. Mike Prager. And team parent Vanessa De Lingus.
Congratulations, the third group, okay. Anyone want to represent the third group to say something? Go ahead. Who want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, just first and foremost, I want to thank our league and our board and all the parents and coaches involved. You guys make this possible. Without you guys, as you guys know, wouldn't happen. Every time we step on outfield, we're proud to represent the city of West Covina. We carry that name on our chest with pride, and we hope to continue doing that. We do have a goal, and it's a lofty goal, but in the next couple of years, if we can make a run at regionals in San Bernardino or Williamsport, we want to do that. So we'll keep this, like prior coach said, keep this winning tradition going, see if we can get there. Thank you, guys.
Great job, great job. Thank you so much. Good job, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Let's win again next year, okay, so we can give you another certificate next year. Man, this is a big production. You broke the record. Last time, I only have a 20, you have 70. Okay, number four group, okay.
Our nine, 10, and 11 All-Star Team. Joshua Bello. William Fortis. Nicholas Garay. Yoshi Hernandez. Ethan Lee. Benjamin Martinez. Max Martinez. Max McDowell. Jazz McMaro. Roman Padilla. Luis Peña. Julian Roboletto. Manager Rob McDonald. Coaches Mike McMaro. Rick Hernandez. Miguel Roboletto. And team parent Marian McDonald.
Okay, congratulations to group number four. Okay, and, okay, man, this is a good production. Congratulations, good job, continue to win. Coach, you want to say something? Manager, okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you to the city, Ollie, for always coming out and supporting us, opening day and all that. Real proud of these boys, these boys in District, both their games, they mercy the competition, so they played really well. And like Coach Matt said, we have a goal, and we're going to work hard to do it. These going to be, hopefully, most of our 12-year-old team next year, so we're proud of West Covina American, and thank you all.
Good job. Thank you so much, good job. So I see you guys next year, okay? I'm going to win again. Okay, and let's give, Eric, come over here. Eric? Yeah, 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 you. Yeah. Eric is the person produced this, how many, hundreds? Okay, of certificate for whole day, and he worked overtime, just make sure the kids have it. Let's give him a hand. But, but, thank you so much, parents. Thank you so much for your support, okay? With you, West Covina is a proud city, and we so happy to see a very proud kid continue to do the teamwork. You're going to carry this forever, and we happy for you. We want you to continue work as a team and help each other. Thank you so much. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, congratulations. Have a good night.
I'm pretty good at this. Yeah. Good luck. Congratulations, yeah. Are you guys sure you don't want to stay for the show? I know it's kind of boring, but thank you so much. Have a good night, try carefully. Okay. Okay, okay, city manager report, okay? Please, our city manager, Paulina Morales, would you please have a report for us? Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. So tonight's city manager's report, I'm going to try to be brief. So just wanted to recap, I think we had a wonderful summer season with our summer concerts. This year, we rolled out two new things. We had a costume contest, and you can see the pictures of some of the winners for the 50s and 60s costume, and then our coupon program. So we hope that our community enjoyed the summer concerts, and we look forward to having them next year, and enhancing or adding to our costume participants next year and the coupon participants. So every time that someone participated or attended an event, they got a stamp, and at the end, they were able to get a raffle prize. So we just want to make sure that we can engage the community in any way that we can to encourage them to attend our summer concerts. Next, this last week, we had some updates on some litigation. So we had the Mark Taylor versus City of West Covina. We were in court last week, and due to outside sources or the city's control, we were required to settle the case, and so the city did settle the case last week. It's not been finalized, and so both parties are currently working on the settlement agreement, and there's no further information on that case at this time. The student case was an action brought by a city, brought by a prior city council candidate challenging the city's campaign contribution limit in the Nominable Code, and the city attorneys were triumphant in getting a summary judgment in the city's favor. Next, we just, a couple, two months ago, brought back the agreement with the county for animal services, or animal control fees. So these are just some of the updated fee schedule for dog licenses and cat license. It's on our, should be on our website. So if you do have a pet in the city, we encourage you to get your license for your pet. It helps register your animal in the city. So we encourage them, and the information is on our website, so you can find how to register your animal on the city's website. Also, wanted to provide an update of Vine Daycare. We usually have that open during the summer due to the school site being closed for construction improvements. We were not able to open up that facility during the summer, and at this time, we are reevaluating whether or not we will be opening that facility. We have reached out to the participants of the program and put them in contact with the YES. It's a program, a free program for students K through 6th grade at the elementary Vine School, so there's other options, and we are providing that information to the participants. Any information on the updates, we will be providing that to the families that had participated in the Vine Daycare's program. Just as an update, we are having our State of the City. Tickets are on sale, or sponsorship opportunities are available, and this is an invitation to all the community members, if they want to attend. It's Thursday, September 12th, 5:30 to 8:30 at the West Covina Sportsplex, and tickets can be found online through our website. As I mentioned, the State of the City, Thursday, September 12th, we have the Third Annual Dugout Cookout and 9/11 Tribute Softball Tournament with the West Covina Fire Association, Saturday, September 14th, at the West Covina Sportsplex, and then we have the Second Annual Mega Moon Festival, Saturday, September 21st through Sunday, September 22nd, and that's at the historic downtown West Covina. And Teta Truck, Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at the West Covina Civic Center. So we're going to have a very busy September, so we hope to see our residents at one of the many events in September. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, city managers, okay? Any other comment? Nope? Okay, then I'm going to move, before I move, moving to oral communication, we have a German. Okay, Gilbert Garcia, 74, was born in West Covina in 1950. Gilbert entered the military at the age of 21 as an Army Private E1, and was a proud soldier serving his time in the DMZ in Korea during the Vietnam War. After leaving the military, Gilbert worked as a federal protective officer on the way to the U.S. Marshal Service. After 33 years combined years of service, he retired as a supervisory deputy in the United States Marshal Service as Assistant Chief of the Los Angeles Branch Office, ending a very, very successful and accomplished career. Gilbert was an avid person, animal lover, and a philanthropist to many local nonprofit organizations, including his donation to the West Covina K-9 program to help purchase our K-9 bulletproof vest. Gilbert is survived by his wife, Cheryl, children Mia, Danielle, and Danny, and the grandchildren Jacob, Kyle, Cruz, and Miller. And the city managers and Assistant City Clerk, would you send a condolence from our city to the family? Thank you so much. Now we move to oral communication. We are now move to oral communication. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The time will start when you reach the podium. Request to speak on agenda item will be heard prior to request to speak on the non-agenda items. So in the interest of time, I would like to set the speaker time of three minutes. Do I have a consensus? If everybody's okay, so we set up three minutes. Okay, Assistant City Clerk, and how many speaker we have today?
I have about 12 speakers, mayor.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Looks like 13, 14, 15, mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
It is all on the same item? The same item? Thank you. Our first speaker is Dan Miller, followed by Audrey Miller, followed by Dr. Peter Davis.
Good evening, council members. And I'm here to talk about Citrus and Cameron. I'm in favor of it, have been for a while. My wife and I seem to be the only two people that are able to schedule time for this. Our neighbors and other people have babysitting problems, they also work late. So I would like to read the email that my neighbor sent to address you guys. His name is Robert Lorenz. He said, "I wanted to reach out regarding the traffic signal on Cameron and Citrus, in which I am favor of. I have participated in multiple town halls and city council meetings regarding this subject. I have asked the city council representative, Ollie Cantos, on many occasions about this intersection, and I have spoken at city council meetings. I live two streets west of this intersection on Cameron and have been here since 2020. Each year, I notice that the traffic is getting heavier in both directions, as many people now use that as a thoroughfare, and I also noticed an uptick on traffic on Citrus and the surrounding streets. This intersection has had its share of accidents and continues to do so. With no control or flow or stop signs, or no control or flow at the stop signs, most accidents seem to occur in the middle of the intersection. Additionally, this intersection is heavily used by pedestrians who walk their dogs, run, and cycle. The local high school kids walk through this intersection to and from school, and high school sports teams run through it as well. I walk, run most mornings, and I'm always on guard when traveling through this intersection." So that was Robert Lorenz. He lives on Coral Tree. I live on Magnolia. I live on Magnolia, which is one block west of Citrus. So there's 40,000 cars going through that intersection now, according to TransTech. And that is constantly increasing since 2022. So my question is, come 2025, 2026, what are we going to be looking at then? Okay? A lot of people that are against this, the reasoning behind it has nothing to do with flow of traffic. They say reasons like, "I can't back out of my driveway. I'm going to lose parking. My property values are going to go down. There's a dip in the road." I've heard it all. Well, there's a slight hill. You won't be able to see the signal well. But you can actually see the flashing stop signs now. So you'll be able to see the signal because it's actually higher. So anyway, to finish off, I only have five seconds. I've been in favor for this for two years now, and I hope it's time that we pass. And the data shows it.
Thank you, sir.
Audrey Miller, followed by Dr. Peter Davis, followed by Steven C.
Hi. Can I touch that?
Yes, yes, yes. It will shock you.
Well, it says, "Please don't adjust the microphone," so, but I'm pretty short, so. Anyway, to, my name's Audrey Miller. My apologies.
It's a new system, I'm sorry. You are, that's why I'm using today.
Go ahead. I'm the test person here.
We're testing out.
My name's Audrey Miller. I'm married to Dan Miller, and we've been West Covina residents for 37 years. I would like to continue with a couple more emails that we've gotten from our neighbors who haven't been able to attend these meetings but are in favor of the signal. This one is from Helen Nakatsui. Dear committee, I am not able to attend the upcoming city council meeting on August 20th, but would like to express my concerns regarding the traffic signal at Citrus and Cameron. My husband and I have been a resident on Magnolia Avenue for over 10 years. We also have three young children, ages 5 to 10. Being a corner lot, my husband and I have seen the increased traffic on Cameron over the years. We have seen the construction and implementation of new traffic signals on Cameron as well. We are in favor of replacing the only stop sign in our neighborhood to facilitate the flow of traffic during rush hour, school drop-offs, and to make the intersection safer for our children who might one day walk to South Hills High School. Though I understand this may change the aesthetic of our beautiful neighborhood, which is the reason we first decided to move here and build our family, I believe reducing the number of cars sitting in front of our homes will actually help preserve the beauty of peacefulness of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Helen. And I have another one from our neighbor, Ella Correo. Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Correo, and I live one block from the intersection of Citrus and Cameron. I have three children, and we take walks daily in this direction and pass through this intersection. My son will be attending South Hills High School, as many children do. He hopes to walk to and from school. As much as my husband and I would like for this to be a healthy and fun part of his life experience, we will not allow it due to the danger in crossing the intersection in question. In our unfortunate experience, this intersection is commonly ignored or missed. I have been in very many close calls while crossing Citrus on both foot or vehicle. For those who are driving upwards from Cortez and the 10 freeway, they are accelerating because of the elevation. And for those who are driving down from Vine and Country Club direction, they are speeding down. Both directions are dangerous. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter and keeping our family safe now and for a bright future. And as for Dan and I, you know, we're in favor of it. We feel that, you know, the studies warrant this intersection, that the signal is justified, and we feel that it's time to move forward and make it happen without further delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Peter Davis, followed by Steven C., followed by Jimmy Lima.
Hi, I'm Peter Davis, and I've lived in my house near the corner of Cameron and Citrus for almost 50 years. Right now, if somebody were to turn right off Citrus onto Cameron, going east, from south, going south and turning east, they would hit me. Because there is no provision for my first driveway on the street for them to even see me as they come on a green light. On a red light, we turn right on the red, but at least they'd stop, maybe. Right now, they do stop because there's a stop sign. That's one of the many reasons we should not have a traffic light there. Without the diet program, which you people instructed the Traffic Commission to deal with us on, and they did not. They disobeyed you. They had a meeting about a week ago, and they didn't even bring up the diet plan until we did. And then we were out of order, we were told. But the city council instructed them to discuss it. With the diet plan, the signal might work because it would be forced to turn wider, not right into my car. There's also, at night, the cars go fast. Right now, sometimes they drop, they forget the stop sign. But that's the only stop sign between Grand and the end of Cameron. So there's no reason for those cars to stop. They'll just go through all the green lights racing. And then if they're seeing a yellow light, we all know what happens. You don't slow down, you speed up to make the yellow light before it turns red. There are many, many reasons that this is a dangerous light section if we don't have the diet. And no one's even discussed the diet. With the diet, we would have, flow of traffic would be much faster because there'd be left turn, right turn, and straight ahead. The middle lane would be the one that you would turn off. So if you have to wait for traffic to go by, you'd turn into your driveway or something like that. You would have a safe place to wait. But this diet hasn't been discussed, even though this council recommended that, or ordered that it be discussed by the Traffic Commission. The only people who voted against the traffic light on the commission were the two police officers who've been there, sat there and watched it, and know that there are fatalities when there's a traffic light. And that's why they want to keep it with stop signs.
Hey, excuse me, Bill. Would you quiet, quiet, please? Would you please quiet, Bill? Wait for your time, okay? Next, please.
Steven C., followed by Jimmy Lima, followed by Jim Grivich.
I haven't started talking yet.
Yeah, go, go.
That was an awful short three minutes. So I'll take five. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council people. I've been a resident of West Covina since 1984, same house. And I will say this. I say traffic enforcement is the issue. Has nothing to do with anything else. When Cameron was 35 miles an hour when I moved in 40 years ago. Now it's 45, and that seems to be the problem. That seems to be a problem, Mr. Will, you know that. We've got to slow traffic. I likewise went to the last meeting because you requested them to talk about traffic diet and traffic calming methods. That did not happen. But my concern also is the consequential damages that occur when you do traffic calming. There are two streets that go from Cameron to Citrus. One is Charlinda, which is the street I live on. And the other one is Larkwood, which goes into, oh, excuse me, which is Inwood, which goes into Larkwood. Both of those streets will be shortcuts if you traffic diet. So they would also have to be addressed in the traffic dieting plan. So whatever comes out of this, if there is a traffic dieting plan, those have to be considered. Otherwise, you're going to be doing a tremendous disservice to about 60 residents in that community. Okay, you will be, the streets are, no sidewalks, barely a car can pass when two cars are parked on the east side of the road. Now, I only have to, a couple of things to say about the signal itself. I'm not in favor of it. First off, it's the only intersection there's never been a fatality at on Cameron. Ever since you've put something at Baranca and Cameron, there's been a fatality, there's been a fatality at Lark Allen, there's been a fatality at Hollenbeck. I think the word I'm interested in is public safety, as you should as well. We know that there are problems. And with all the things that have been discussed in the last weeks, or I'm going to say, the last seven years about this option, I think something has to be done with respect to, if it's done right, if you want to, if you're set on putting in the signals, that's fine. But do the things necessary to make it right. You're going to have to lower the grade, period. If you don't lower the grade, there will be fatalities. And you're going to have to do something to basically demonstrate that you've taken all precautions to do that. It's, and I don't know, I'm thinking you're going to have a number more like $2.5 million to $3 million to make that intersection proper. So if you have that kind of money, do it right. You put the signal in, you know, and if that's a foregone conclusion, I think that's probably what's going to happen. Because that's the impression I got from the meeting with the Traffic Commission there last week, is that we didn't discuss anything other than, and we accept the traffic, accept the signal. And quite frankly, there wasn't much to talk about because the traffic calming and traffic dieting was not an issue. So whatever you decide to do, just do it right. Because you've got residents there, and you're going to have consequential damages, which could be lawsuits to the city, knowing full well that you didn't do it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, next, please.
Jimmy Lima, followed by Jim Grivich, followed by Patricia Powert.
Good evening. I'm actually here to discuss the traffic signal on Citrus and Cameron. I actually commute that intersection on a daily basis with my wife and kids. So I'm obviously here concerned about our safety as we cross the intersection. Obviously, our concern has to do with the rate of speed on Cameron Avenue. Do I want to be hit at a 5, 10 miles per hour? Or do I want to get hit at 50 to 70 miles per hour on Cameron? When someone runs a red light? And obviously, there's a lot of cars that run red lights. So this is, that's how I'm seeing this. So I'm thinking about this as my wife's and kid's safety on that intersection. But when you look at the data from the reports that TransTech submitted, I want you to look at page number nine on the review that was done in that intersection. Since 2021, there's only been 12 collisions on that intersection. And most of the collisions that have occurred on that intersection have to do with property damage to the vehicle. There hasn't been anybody, there hasn't been any fatality or severe injury because that's quoted 1 through 5, with 5 being property damage only. So based on your own reports, that, based on your own reports since 2021, that intersection has only had 12 collisions. So that means that since 2021, that means 1,329 days, that intersection has only had 12 collisions. No pedestrians or bicycle collisions have been reported. My concern as a resident that uses that intersection on a daily basis, and in addition, I walk that intersection with my wife and I in the mornings, I think that adding a traffic signal to that intersection is going to make things worse. It's not going to make it better. I probably would have liked to have seen the data, the same data on page nine, on table number two. I would have liked to have seen that same data for Hollenbeck, Baranca, and Azusa to compare the traffic with traffic signal lights to see what the data looks like on those intersections, since that's the direction that we might go to adding a signal light. So I would rather see the data there to see where we're at and how many injuries we've had compared to the intersection of Cameron and Citrus. Because based on the data that we are seeing here from TransTech, I don't think that it warrants a signal light at this particular moment, based on what I'm seeing. And the way I'm seeing this is, the way I'm seeing this is, I think that having that stop signs there, it deters people going fast on Cameron Avenue. And I think adding that signal light there is going to increase the traffic accidents on that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, and next, please.
Jim Grivich, followed by Patricia Powert, followed by Mario.
Good evening. Sorry, I can't come here every week like I used to, but I'm coming as often as I can. Anyway, tonight, I'm here to talk about something different, fireworks. The reason I'm here is because, as you know, I was involved with the audits that the city has had undergone with the state of California, one by the state controller, one by the state auditor. And both of those audits said essentially the same thing, which is the city's purchasing procedures are not very good. And we have had consistent problems with purchasing. And this time, it's the fireworks. And reading your staff report in the council agenda, you wouldn't even know that there was a problem. Essentially, what's actually there is you failed to follow proper purchasing procedures. You did not try to get a good price for fireworks. And you obviously paid more than you needed to, probably by a huge amount of money. And in this case, the real issue isn't so much that procedures weren't followed. The real issue is exactly the same thing happened last year with exactly the same activity. And the same person did both things. That's my concern. You know, people can make mistakes. But when the mistakes are made repeatedly, and they cost the city money, the taxpayers money, something really needs to be done about it. And I know a little bit about fireworks, just to talk about the industry. If you want to have an event on July 4th, you've got a problem. Everybody wants to have a fireworks event on July 4th, and there are so many, only so many companies. So if you want a good price, you have to start really early, like way more than a year in advance, to get a good price, a good business relationship. Either that or change the date to some other date besides July 4th. I mean, those are the only two choices. And, and I don't understand why the person who was doing this didn't understand what the problem was, didn't do the proper correction, which is to start real early, talking to the companies. In the staff report, it talks about a request for a proposal. You find out a lot more if you just talk to the people about how to do it. And I suggest that that take place. Then you can get good prices. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Patricia Powert, followed by Mario, followed by Shannon.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. My husband and I purchased our home in 2013. We live on-
Could you move the mic to you most please? Thank you.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
Can you hear me now? Okay, we live on South Citrus Street right before Cameron Avenue. And we oppose the installation of the traffic signal on Citrus and Cameron. The proposal will convert South Citrus Street from two lanes into three lanes to make room for a designated left-turn lane. This will negatively affect our quality of life. We will get red curbs and loose parking in front of our property for myself, for my neighbor to the left, for my neighbor to the right, where we and my visitors, people who service our homes, are supposed to park. We will get fast-moving traffic pushed towards our property, and we will have difficulties entering and exiting our driveway. On a daily basis, we will all be at risk of getting hit by speeding cars as we leave or enter a property. This proposal will affect our property value and the value of multiple other homes in the area. Because nobody wants to live by a traffic light. Nobody wants to live with red curbs or with no parking in front of their home. I'm sure none of you would like it or anybody else here. At the April 16th city council meeting, the directive from you all was for TransTech to provide, to bring all options back to the community, including traffic calming measures for our input and participation in the decision-making. TransTech did not follow this directive by the city council. They totally ignored it. A July Traffic Commission meeting was scheduled and canceled without any explanation. At the August 8th traffic meeting, we all expected a review of the option, but as usual, no information was available for us to be ahead of time. Instead, it was quite apparent that the meeting was just a formality for TransTech to press forward with the installation of the traffic signal. No opposing input from residents, of West Covina PD, or comments from Mayor Brian Calderon were taken into consideration. The mayor was present and requested that this meeting, meaning today's meeting, be postponed because he was going to be out of town. Nope, they didn't listen. At the August 8th meeting, two West Covina police officers voted against installation of the traffic signal. They patrolled the intersection, observed drivers, and stated that they believe the traffic signal may cause traffic speeds to increase and make the intersection less safe. They did not feel a traffic light was warranted. Of all the residents attending the traffic meeting, about 18 or so, all opposed the traffic light, except for two. And respectfully, it should be noted that they do not live by the intersection. They live about a block or two away in the cul-de-sac. So they will not be negatively impacted by the traffic light like all of us that do live by the intersection. Now, I would like to know, when does TransTech current contract expire? There's an- There's an open RFP right now for engineering services, and I feel that this paper recommendation is biased and slated for TransTech to get a new contract. And it's not in the best interest of the community. It's a complete disservice to the community and a waste of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Our next speaker is Mario, followed by Shannon, followed by Lance.
All right, sorry. All right. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Mario Sobolvaro, and I am here to express my concerns regarding the proposed traffic light installation at the intersection of Cameron and Citrus Avenue. As someone who regularly travels through this intersection, including during rush hour when South Hills High School lets out, I am very familiar with the unique challenges it presents. While I understand that there are citizens who support the installation of the traffic light, I believe it is crucial to consider the potential dangers that such a change could bring. One of my biggest concerns is a specific and significant hazard created by the intersection's topography. When traveling east on Cameron, about 300 yards from Citrus, there's a slight elevation that obstructs the line of sight to the intersection. Additionally, Citrus Avenue acts as a drain street, elevating towards the north and creating a dip on the east side of Citrus. This combination of an incline leading into a dip poses a serious risk, especially for vehicles traveling at 50 miles per hour, which is possible given the 40 mile per hour speed limit. The introduction of a traffic light could exacerbate these dangers, potentially leading to accidents as vehicles unexpectedly encounter the changes in elevation. Moreover, while funding has been set aside for this project, I urge the council to reconsider whether this is the best use of our resources. There are other intersections, such as Vincent and Puente, where the community has expressed a greater need for safety improvements, particularly after fatal accidents have occurred there. In conclusion, I respectfully ask the City Council to weigh these concerns carefully. While some may see the traffic light as a solution, the potential risk it introduces must be fully considered. Let's ensure that any changes made are in the best interest of everyone's safety, especially in an area as complex as Cameron and Citrus intersection. And I got a little bit of extra time. I would recommend, if you could, coming from Baranca, traveling east on Cameron, pull off to the side of the road during the evening hours, maybe 100 yards, and just watch the headlights coming eastbound on Cameron. And when it is that they disappear, and when it is that you see them, you will, yeah, get a good perspective there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Next, please.
Shannon Volk, followed by Lance Volk, followed by Christine Volk.
Hello, council. I live on the corner, or next to the corner of Citrus and Cameron. First thing I'd like to say is so far, there has been no death, not one, on that corner from an accident. However, if you go further up to Hollenbeck or further down to Baranca, that cannot be said in those intersections, which have traffic lights. In fact, the one over on Baranca next to the high school, that's only been there for maybe a couple of years, and already you've had a death there related to the light. All the accidents that, all the accidents that happened on the corner of Citrus and Cameron are minor fender benders and no serious injuries. A couple of people come and they're concerned about pedestrians. Not one pedestrian has ever been injured on that corner. I've lived there for over 35 years, it's never happened one time. I understand, you know, during high-traffic areas that they're nervous across the street. But believe me, you know, they're going to be a lot more nervous when people are flying through that intersection and run that light. Oh, as far as the traffic flow, traffic flow through that intersection only slows down twice a day for approximately about an hour and a half. And a lot of the traffic happens because people are coming from other areas out of town, passing through, using it as a thoroughfare to get across, pass West Covina to head home, bypassing their freeway. If you were to slow down the traffic by reducing it to 40 and then eventually to 35, that, pretty sure that would eliminate a lot of that issue. Putting a light there would encourage people to take that as a highway, and it'd only escalate and have people speeding faster through the intersection, again, increasing the chances of accidents and death. Oh, at the last meeting for the light, which supposedly they're going to have a road diet, but they didn't bring it up one time. And when you ask questions about it, they just remain silent and say nothing about it. They don't want to have a dialogue about it. We live in the area, and it very much concerns us, however, that people trying to put the light in, they don't want dialogue about it. They don't want to talk, they just want a monologue and let you have your say, but not respond back when you're asking them questions. It's very, very frustrating. Well, that's essentially, I've got 30 seconds left, but I'm good with that. All right.
Thank you, sir.
For your time.
I appreciate it.
Lance Volk, followed by Christine Volk, followed by Robert Torres.
Good evening, council. My name is Lance Volk, and I've lived on Cameron 40 years. And I used to go down that street when I was in high school, ditching school to go to the beach. 35 back then. Now, there's a problem with not only the street, but it's a problem with the alley behind Cameron. You can't get out. Because you're going to have cars, if you have a light, coming down from, up by the golf course. And they're going to have a speed behind them because they're going to be going downhill. If they get a yellow light, guess what? They're coming right on through. Anybody coming out of that alley, I literally have to have the bus drivers let me know when it's safe to come out, if there's a bus driver there. We have people, when there's a lot of traffic, will come down Sharlinda, and they'll come through the alley, and they're in a frickin' hurry. You'd better not get your car to come out too fast. You'll, one will hit you. Now, the diet idea that was not brought up, you've already, I'm not going to go there because you already heard it. But coming down, coming past Grand, Baranca, heading west, all right? When you come to the stop sign, well, that's where I live, right there, one of those two houses, they don't even stop. They just roll around the corner. And by then, I've got a telephone pole, a bus stop, and all that stuff sitting there. You're trying to see. And they'll just come right, you almost get hit a couple of times. It's just a bad, bad idea. And, and as far as this gentleman talked about the kids in high school, they don't do, they haven't done that in many years. Why? It was unsafe for the kids to run down that street because of the traffic, the speed of the traffic. Speed is what's doing this. I just had another one the other day, just ran into the back of the car, you know? That was last month. They're not paying attention. They're on their cell phones. You know, I had my son, my youngest son, door ripped off of his car. He started to open it, this much, boom, got that, it was at night. So we have a lot of experience. I myself have had, our family have had at least four, five, five accidents, rear enders, total two of them. Watched one lady flip her car in front. It's bad. It's not a good idea. And then we have, then you'll paint the front of my sidewalk red for the turn. Where do I park? Where do I park to go into my house if I have parking in the front? You know, our family has four cars, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Christine Volk, followed by Robert Torres, followed by Arlene Shet.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for taking the time to hear us. I know it's been an arduous and challenging conversation over the years.
Can you lower your mic, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm vertically challenged. I won't go over, I won't waste our time with some of the other things that folks have mentioned, the road diet, obviously, the fact that Mayor Tabutabai is at the DNC. My request for that is simply that you hold your vote until he is able to return. So I'm just asking if you could hold it until September. I honestly think it's disrespectful to the residents of West Covina not to. However, what I'd like to address is warrants 1 through 3, which are based on the volume of traffic. I understand that they have been met. However, I'm not sure how that is possible to be met, given the schools that are around Mount Sac, Cal Poly, as well as obviously the K through 12s. In addition, warrant number 7 is for crash experience. It was only met on the most recent survey, which was May 29th of this year. What I would like to see is something more of an apples-to-apples comparison, so something maybe quarterly. Maybe just give it, I don't know, even another six months. Just, just do it, just a couple more times so that you can compare a slower season, right, versus, like in the summer, versus something that's peak in the school season. So maybe not even a year, just maybe six months. The other thing I wanted to address is warrant number 6, which was not met at all, which would address the pedestrian traffic. I understand that safety is a serious concern, and it is for our family, too. We have kids, we have family, we have older, you know, family members. We want them safe. But warrant number 6 for pedestrian safety is not met for this traffic signal. I guess the only other thing that I really wanted to ask that is, if you guys do choose to vote on this tonight, I do request that you very strongly consider, this is probably not going to be a popular opinion, but the always-on function of a signal, because that will slow the light, and it will be determined by the traffic flow. So that's all I have. And again, thank you for hearing us tonight. We really do appreciate you. Thank you for all that you do for our community, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Robert Torres, followed by Arlene Shet, followed by JD.
Good evening, council. Mayor Potem. I'm here to oppose the traffic signal at Cameron and Citrus. I gave you this handout, I don't know if you got it yet. But the first page basically kind of lists the topics that have been brought up for the intersection, like cut-through traffic, speeding, running stop signs, pedestrian safety, erratic driving. So the reason I bring that up, because those are the principal reasons for it. You know, safety, accidents, what have you. So if you look at the origins of traffic signals, they were never intended to be a fix or primarily used for safety. They were being used to move traffic faster through an intersection, reduce congestion, make traffic flow better. They do have safety components, but they're not supposed to be used as a safety measure. And you can see that all over the city. Westmont, when they put in the signal, everybody was celebrating happy. People keep dying there. One day in Sunset, same thing. They put a signal in years ago, everyone's happy. Collisions, deaths, all these things are happening. So what I'm trying to get across is the signal isn't necessarily going to equal safety. It's there to control traffic, to speed up traffic, to move it faster, and to reduce congestion. So when I talk about that, there's this one, I think it's the third page. It talks about the delay at each intersection. So right now, with the stop delay at the four-way traffic signal, it takes about 28 seconds on average. You're sitting there for 28 seconds. If we put a signal in, it reduces it by 14 seconds. And for the cost of $1.2 million, I don't think it equates because you're basically spending $1.2 million to save 14 seconds on traffic congestion. And with respect to collisions, there was five reported. Like mentioned earlier, all five were very minor, nothing major. And even one was a rear end, which in the future won't even be considered with new standards because the state is adopting new standards right now that will not make this signal warranted for a traffic signal in the near future, once they adopt the new standards. And if you look at the collisions for the last five years, 2021, there was three, 22, there was three, and there was five collisions with their using, and 2024, there was one. So that's the biggest point I want to make. Traffic enforcement has been active. The police officer at the meeting stated that he was out there and that it was successful. And it's reflected in the 2014 data. There's only been one accident. And he recommended against installing a traffic signal. And that's very important because in order for a signal to be warranted, enforcement has to fail. And he stated that it succeeded. So I don't think the traffic signal is warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, please.
Arlene Shet, followed by JD, followed by John Shoemaker.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
A little bit lower, please. A little bit lower, yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Arlene Shet, and I live on the corner of Citrus and Cameron by the bus stop, which is, on the bus stop, it's already all red. So if you were to put a signal, that means in front of my home will also be all red. And I will not have anywhere to park or have visitors come, or deliveries. I don't know where they would, where they would park at. So, and also, if you put a light, if you put a light, people will be traveling through this area way more. We're going to get a lot more people coming through because they know they don't have to stop anymore. They could just go from light to light to light at higher speeds. And just the other day, I was walking, and this guy was going by so fast, but there was, I couldn't tell how fast he was going because you don't have the little, you know, how fast you're going on that side of the street. So, so it just kind of scares me. If you put a light, that there's going to be a big accident. And I live in the corner, I do a lot of gardening, and I don't want to be killed by a car. And having to be looking around to make sure people are stopping, stopping. I mean, I, you know, I used to walk down Cameron to Hollenbeck. But then, right almost when you get to the signal, the cars are so close to the curb that they're going so fast. It's so scary. So now, I don't even go that way. I just go a couple of blocks, and then I go back and go back down Citrus by the school. I can go around there and feel safe. And going at, and crossing at the stop sign, I have no problem with that because when I cross, I have eye contact with people, and they wait for me to cross. If there was a light, I, how am I supposed to guarantee once the thing, the light turned green, I'm crossing, that someone isn't going to go speeding and hit me? So that's all I have to say, that I'm totally against the light.
Thank you so much. Yeah, next, please.
JD, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Jerry Patris.
Good evening. I step up to the mic for the reason that I've heard mentioned a couple of times tonight, and that is safety, enforcement of the traffic laws. I have, I live in a intersection that would be very similar to the one that's being created on Citrus and Cameron, where I have a signal light. And I cannot tell you that a day passes that I don't see a car race to try to beat the light. There would be very few cars that are not traveling the direction of, on Cameron, in either direction, at 55 to 80 miles routinely. And they go through that intersection at that speed. When there's a yellow light, they even increase it by accelerating. And I could hear them accelerating from my garage past the intersection. We have had three deaths at the intersection of Lark Allen and Cameron since I moved in. Been 28 years. The number of accidents compared to Citrus, there is no comparison. I say enforcement because you have a sign that says 25 miles an hour when children are present. I live next to, or across from, an elementary that's neighbor to a community park, Cameron Park, and directly across from Cameron Park, the high school. And there isn't an hour from morning to mid-afternoon that there isn't children present. But I assure you, cars travel through there at those hours at the speed that I mentioned earlier, anywhere from 55 to 80 miles an hour. Enforcement is the solution to the problem of safety. If that is the true concern, is safety, then it's about enforcement. It is about citations being given out, cars being impounded, and people understanding that they cannot get away with impunity, with these violations. If you place a light on Citrus and Cameron, with the dip that exists there, as does one at my intersection, where I can hear the cars bottoming out every time they race through there, that's going to happen at Citrus and Cameron far worse because it's not as wide. And the dip is going, is coming from an ascending direction, coming from an ascending direction or descending without them knowing, and it's going to end up with somebody, one of these vehicle ending up in someone's yard. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
John Shoemaker, followed by Jerry Patris, followed by Shararz from Days Inn.
In this upcoming election, I'm running for the third district. I'll be able to help change the tone. An example would be, we're missing the mayor. And he requested a delay. Delay of a couple weeks or so wasn't going to be earth-shattering. This has been going on now for, what, six, seven years? But it's so important to do while you're completely ignoring other intersections that have had problems much longer. The one that comes to mind is the one that, what is it, over on Amar Wood, I always forget the name of that street, where we've had three deaths in one year. But it hasn't been a priority. Hasn't been a priority to get it done. You have to wonder why. The same effort hasn't been put into that intersection to correct it that's been put into this. Also, I have been coming to city council meetings for 25 years. I have never heard, especially a member of the Planning Commission, make the accusations that were made against our mayor, publicly made against our mayor, that he was abusing his wife. And this council is silent on that. I remember years that if you were a planning commissioner or a commissioner in general, you misspoke about another member of the council, you were fired. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. And this is like the third time. And he's a candidate to sit up here making comments like that. That's absolutely ridiculous to have that happen. And the biggest thing that I do, being on this council, is that nobody has three votes anymore on anything. So it'll change. An example would be, we had a report out, and I appreciate that, about the Mark Taylor lawsuit. But it tried to blame an unknown party, namely the insurance company, saying, we're going to lose a lot more than we can settle for. Why? Because as some attorneys put it to me on both sides, Tony Wu's a hand grenade, and there's too many people who can testify who can pull that pin. And they decided they didn't want to lose even more millions of dollars. That's what we need to change. So just think about it. Insurance company wants to pay out millions of dollars, because they're afraid they're going to pay out even more. So we need a complete change in tone. So please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jerry Patris, followed by Shararz from Days Inn, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, Council. I actually have a question for the city manager. There's a page on the website called Election and Voter Information, and then there's a section for West Covina election. And then the section I have the question on is under Political Sign Regulation, City of West Covina, Section 26100, exempt signs. And I'm a bit confused. This ordinance or the rule states that no sign shall be erected earlier than 60 days prior to the start of the closest future election date, and each sign shall be removed within 10 days after the election. The election hasn't come. I estimate out that 60 days prior to the start of the closest, the election would be September 6. And there's a lot of signs in District 1 and District 3 and elsewhere, and big banners. So I'm wondering when they were going to be removed, because they're in violation of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Shararz from Days Inn, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Dan Tran.
Good evening, Council. How you guys doing? My name's Sharaz Dale. I'm proud owner of the Days Inn. This is nothing on the agenda. This is regarding the Planning Commission and your guys' last meeting regarding the Five Star. I have received emails from code enforcement that is saying they're not, they're not up to code. This is back, I want to say about a year ago. We're such, and we don't have, the city doesn't have any money. Why aren't you guys charging them for all these violations? Second of all, all these facts and stuff that you guys have, why don't you guys actually ask the police department and fire department? Don't discriminate my hotel and tell me that my violations are only 100 lower than them. 98% of my calls is because something is going on at the Five Star Inn. I stay at that property, and I'm damn proud of staying at that property. But the stuff that goes on there, you guys aren't even aware what goes on. If, at the planning department, the owner of that business said that he will donate $1 million to the city, wow, that's a lot, and then pay you guys the TOT tax? Just put one and one together. Where's that money coming from? There's something going on. I was reading the code enforcement letters. On the code enforcement letters, almost nine months that he was doing illegal renovations. When I did my renovations at my property, I was up to date. Even when I missed one of my inspections, they had sent me a letter. They had contacted us. Why isn't this being done to their, is there some sort of agenda with the planning department? And if you guys want those emails, I could send it to you, because I personally think that the Five Star Inn, bringing the homeless to West Covina, it's going to mess up our city even more. And I live there. If you guys want 100 more calls, I'll give you a call every day. And the police department knows, I don't call them for BS. I call them when I can't take care of it. And that is my block. Everyone on that block knows that nothing's going to go on there without my knowledge, and I will deal with it myself, besides having the police department come. You could ask the police department that's here. They know what I do. They know how long I've been there. I've been there since 96. That is my block. And if you guys want this to happen in our city, let it go. Regarding this traffic light, we all know that there's going to be more deaths. Yeah, it's going to be a little better, but we're going to have more problems at the end. So I say no for that. I say no for the Five Star Inn and the homeless. The city has a way to go around it. Let's do what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
R. Robinson, followed by Dan Tran.
We live in historic times. International tokenization of our assets is continuing forth with, under UCC Article 8, 501, Part A, B, and C. Perhaps this comes as no surprise, but Dems are now promising to confiscate all guns from defenseless citizens, control food prices, set private sector wages, while demanding re-education camps, death camps for all conservatives, Christians, and constitutionalists. Communism doesn't work. They're going to bring back all the chemical factories. This is their promise, if they, if they manage to maintain control. America will be finished, replaced by communist, border czar Kamala, and heroic tampon Tim, according to their radical left-wing BlackRock vanguard State Street-inspired fascist agenda. According to Sasha Latapova, Catherine Watt of Baileywick News, quote, "The CDC is a scary organization, above the law and above the Constitution. We are about to experience, in the 77 days leading to the rigged election, one or more black swan events, maybe related to monkeypox and bird flu, which is slated to be the next psychological operation. MKUltra illegal human experimentation programs never really ended. You will be labeled. Authorities will not have to produce any actual evidence. It's true martial law. We should react, fight. Don't test, don't trace, don't mask, don't isolate, don't vax, and don't voluntarily go to any secondary locations suggested by any kidnappers, clothed in public health or law enforcement uniforms, inciting public health laws. Fight with everything you have, every ounce of energy, every possible weapon at your disposal. Fight. Your chances of survival, if you are taken to a secondary location, decrease dramatically. If you're going to die, let it happen then and there, and not on their terms." I know this is a horrible thing to think about, but they have a plan to place, in place to do what they want with you. You have a plan in place to deny them that. Fight. The FEMA's have a Rex 84 program. It's all planned out, FEMA camps. And pray that God doesn't allow this to occur. It's worthwhile to write and publish...
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next speaker, please.
Lisa, I want to thank you for saving me for last. That's going to be a hard one to follow up. I'm going to keep this under 130 watch. Good evening, esteemed members of West Covina City Council, city staff, and fellow residents. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to all of you who work tirelessly behind the scenes to make our city a better place. Often, the dedication of public service workers goes unnoticed, but your commitment does not go unappreciated. From maintaining our streets to ensuring our safety, your efforts are the backbone of this community. Thank you for all you do to keep West Covina thriving. I'm Dan Tran, a first-generation Vietnamese-American and a candidate for District 48 State Assembly. Growing up in the St. Gabriel Valley, I've been deeply involved in our community, serving the Rotary Club, Knights of Columbus, and attending and graduating from Azusa Pacific. I grew up in District 48. I raised my kids in District 48, and I want to continue to make it a great place. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, and any speaker?
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, and the city manager, could you respond to some of the speakers, please?
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor Protem and council members. A lot of the speakers spoke regarding the Citrus-Cameron item, which will be, staff presentation will be provided, so I will defer those comments for the presentation. Jen Grivage did make a comment about the purchasing poly and the policy and the fireworks. So in the staff report, we did indicate that, moving forward, we are going to do a request for proposals so that we can get bids for fireworks for next year, understanding that, as he mentioned, 4th of July is a difficult day to get fireworks. So we're going to do our best to do or follow the purchasing policy for this upcoming 4th of July. Jerry Patris, I would love to have a conversation with you regarding your question. And I believe, Shararz, regarding the Five Star, I think at the last council meeting, July 2nd, it was clear that we were not going to be moving forward with the pathway homes at the Five Star Inn. So that is not moving forward. And I believe that was all of the comments from residents not related to Citrus-Cameron.
Okay, thank you, city managers. Now we move into consent calendars.
Sorry, one item, I do need to make a correction on item, agenda item number three. There's a correction for the cost for the technology to provide real-time bus tracking data for riders via mobile phone application. So the total cost for that is going to be $25,369 instead of the $16,162. So I just wanted to make that correction before you voted on the consent calendar.
Got it. Thank you, city manager. Do I have, council want to pull any item? Okay, go ahead. You want to pull any item, Councilman Cantos?
Yes, item number, yes, please, Mr. Mayor Protem, item number three.
Item number three. Any other? City council want to pull any item? If not, do I have a motion to move item one to 10 beside number three?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, work call, please.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, a second by Councilwoman Diaz, to approve consent calendar items one through 10, with the exception of item number three. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Items passed for zero, with Mayor Caldrone Tabatiba being absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And item number three, Councilwoman Cantos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The report described that there's an increase to the expenditures, to the amount of 6.7%. I was just wondering, with regard to that increase, is that making the assumption that we are going to have this, this contract to last from September 2024 through September 25 with, for the entire 12 months?
Councilmember Cantos, so the contract is, I believe, for the year. The intent, as we had previously come to council in regards to the microtransit, is that we are going to keep the gold line with MV Transit, and we are going to be eliminating the red and the blue lines. And so as we're working with the consultant for the microtransit, there's going to be a transition period. And so as we set up that microtransit system in the city, we are still going to be providing the red and the blue line. And so as that transition, the microtransit transitions in, the red and blue shuttles will be transitioned out, and we will continue to have the green, the green line.
And under the plan, the savings through the transition is $138,000 and change?
I don't believe so. And I'll have Kelly McDonald answer that question.
It was a...
Good evening.
Good evening. So, so under that plan, it's a savings of 100. There will be cost cut, cut to the tune of $138,000 from that, from that chart that was in Attachment 1?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Based on use.
So if there's a cut, then why is there, does it say that there was an increase of expenditures of 6.7%? So I would just...
Right. The percent is based, the percent increase is the variable costs, the components of the cost, the rates of the cost.
Okay.
So it's just the year-to-year, year-to-year increase.
And is it possible that we could actually put the microtransit pilot program into place earlier than, than September 2025, which could actually represent an increase in the savings for our not having to extend all the way to 12 months?
Yes, we're targeting mid-November.
Mid-November?
Right.
Okay, so then that's when it...
24, if I may.
Mid-November, November 2024. Okay, so we, so, but this is just laying out the most that we could spend at $1,732,000 and change?
That's correct. This, the proposal is based on a status quo, extending the, what we have in place with the three alignments. And once we're able to launch that microtransit program, we'd be scaling back.
Which would represent savings to, which fund would we end up not spending from, as a result of reductions because of putting the pilot program into place, let's say by November 2024?
Both Prop C and Measure R.
Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you. With that, I move approval.
So we have a motion of move by Councilman Cantos. Do I have a second?
A second.
Work call, please.
I have a motion by Councilman Cantos, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, to approve consent calendar item number three, consideration of extensions to transportation and lease agreements with MV Transportation, Inc. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro... I haven't noted. Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Caldrone Tabatiba is absent. Thank you.
So motion approved.
Motion is approved for zero.
Good, thank you. Okay, and let's move on to item 11, engineering review of the intersection of Citrus Street and Cameron Avenue. We're going to present this, this item?
Mayor Protem Wu, I will be providing a presentation, and then we have individuals from TransTech that can help answer technical questions regarding the intersection.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. So I just, I'll wait for the par point. Just wanted to give a brief overview of how we got to this point of reviewing a request for a traffic signal at the intersection of Citrus-Cameron. So in 2019, the City of West Covina received requests from residents at that intersection that they wanted to look at traffic calming measures for that intersection. So that went to the traffic committee in June, a community workshop meeting in August of 2019. And it was eventually taken to the city council in August of 2020. At that time, it was, staff was directed to move forward with installation of traffic enhancement improvements that were completed in 2022. After that, the city received additional requests for the intersection improvements. And that's when we evaluated through TransTech the, the intersection, collecting new data and traffic analysis. Then we did the community meeting at Cortez in 2023, the senior center. We brought it back as a traffic committee meeting in December, the council meeting in April, and then we were... in April, and then we were directed to take it back to the traffic committee meeting. So before you tonight is the recommendation for the traffic signal. The next slide is the existing conditions of the traffic signal. So these include the enhancements that were completed in 2022. They include the street sign, speed limit signs, stop signs, and I believe some of the red curb that was added as part of those enhancements. Since then, since the installation of those improvements, we've had, I believe, five collisions at that intersection, and we've, in 2023, and we had one so far this year. So, and the three times that this intersection has been evaluated, each time it has met the number of warrants that would justify installing an intersection, or traffic signal. And in 2019, it met three of the warrants, in 2023 and 2024, it met four of the warrants. So it's increased in the number of warrants that justify installation of a traffic signal at that intersection. The traffic signal that is being recommended is a shared through and right turn lane, protected left turn, with audible countdown for pedestrian crosswalk, and it would be a four-way stop. So it would be a constant red light, and it would turn green when a vehicle were to approach the traffic signal. And as I mentioned, we have Ahmad and Michael Lloyd, senior engineer from TransTech, to answer any of the technical questions regarding the traffic signal.
Okay, thank you, city manager and the city council. Do we have any question? Anybody want to ask any question? Go first. Okay, and Councilman Cantos?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. With regard to the dip that has been brought up, there will still be ways to address the dip there with regard to, is that a, is that a separate issue? I'm just curious.
Mr. Michael Lloyd, senior engineer for TransTech, will answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. The short answer is yes, that would be worked out through the design of the traffic signal. We would have to take into consideration the grades, which includes the dip for the drainage.
Okay, and my only other question is, with regard to people who come up to the light, and if they need to cross, but there, but, but there's no traffic in any direction, there will be a way for them to just press a signal, and then, and then at that point, then they'll be given a signal of green to go?
In that, you're speaking about vehicles, not pedestrians?
Yes, well, no, pedestrians, because, because if a light is at a constant red, then it would only change if a car comes up, but then yet, there would also have to be the factor of, if a pedestrian decides to cross, and it happens to be in the direction where the light is green. So, so just, you know, just want to make sure that that was factored in?
Thank you for the clarification, yes. So it's called an audible pedestrian signal, and it would be accessible, and the call would go in and allow for pedestrians to cross.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other question? Yep, okay, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Wu. I too had that concern about the dip, when JD brought it up, and when other people had mentioned about the lights. And so, I'm happy to hear that it's something that you can remedy, right? The other, the other question I had was, I know that Baranca and Cameron had a signal installed some years, well, a couple of years back. Do we have a count of how many accidents we had there?
Yes, I've got that data here, if you'll bear with me just one moment. So in the time period of January of '23 through July of '24 this year, at Cameron and Baranca, we've had two reported collisions. So that's approximately 18 months.
Okay, but no deaths?
That's correct.
Okay, and Cameron and Hollenbach? Same period, same period, '23, '24?
Correct, same, same time period, January of '23 through July of this year. We've also had two reported collisions at that location. Those collisions did not include any fatalities, and these are reported collisions.
Okay, and on Cameron and Citrus?
So in this time period, from January of '23 through July of this year, we've had six collisions, and they have varied from property damage to complaints of injury. No fatalities reported.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
You done with your, and any other question? Do you have a question? Okay, and the Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
One of the residents mentioned the alleyway. Is that affected, or where exactly is it on there, and would that be an issue?
For the traffic signal design? No, it should not impact operations. I believe the location is on the south side, or excuse me, the north side, where the bus stops are. I think I heard that the bus stop was referenced adjacent to the alleyway. So with this proposal, what we're proposing is a left turn lane, a single-through shared right, so that will help pull traffic towards the center of the road and hopefully improve site distance, not only at the intersection, but adjacent to it as well.
You done? Okay, and any other question, otherwise? Okay, Councilman Cantos?
I'd like to move approval of the staff recommendations for the, for the traffic light, please.
Any second?
I'll second it.
And before we, okay, roll call, I have a question. Okay, and I think a couple of issue, I think, okay, and the resident has, okay, I think the first thing, the concern I have, okay, by a lot of residents, I live in the neighborhood, so I know, okay, how people cross that intersection, okay, safely, okay, with ADA. So city attorney, okay, do we have a potential issue if we not comply with ADA?
Yeah, there could be potentially some exposure there for the city.
Because people want to walk to the Cortez Park, okay, and then, or people want to go walk to the South Hill Country Club. Right now, currently, we don't have a compliance ADA we have.
That's correct. There's always a potential for exposure in those situations.
Okay, so another issue, I think, so, so that's possible, not issue, we want to make sure people can cross that place safely, that is a big intersection. But I think I can understand, okay, the resident concerned about, if they live on the corner, if we're painting red, then they have their issue. Can we have any way to compensate, something we can accommodate, okay, and so they can have not inconvenient? We want to improve the city, we do not want to inconvenience our neighbors.
Understood, and so with, with at least our proposal, we have not designed it, so please understand that. But at least with the concept that we're looking at currently, with the single left turn inside the median there, with the single through and shared right lane, that, again, is pulling traffic towards the center, and so that hopefully will allow room along the shoulders, so that if through the design process, we determine that site distance met, we can allow parking.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a major issue, I think the neighbor has, okay, is the parking, they can get out, and the red curve, and they cannot park anything. So we do not want to have a comment for everybody benefit, but sacrifice on what people live in the corner. So if we can compensate, so demand on the this motion, see, we can compensate with what they need, and discuss with the neighbors, so see, okay, we can accommodate what their request. And at the same time, people want to do their yard work, okay, we want to make sure, okay, and anything, we can slow down the traffic, okay, over there, so currently is what, 35?
Or... So along Cameron, it's 45 currently, and...
Anyway, we can slow down that to 35.
So we have to follow the vehicle code in terms of, it's very prescriptive in terms of how we set speed limits, so if directed by council, we can re-study in terms of...
Can we re-study to slow down to 35?
So...
If we have a school, South Hill High School, then we can, on the Baranca, okay, Baranca, then you make a left, then you go to Mesa Elementary, and so if we can slow down for school area, supposedly 25, school zone.
So I can't commit here because I don't have the data, but if, I'm gonna look to...
Maybe city managers to...
Directed, if staff were directed, we would study it, collect the data, and then we could present it to council in terms of...
And so the light would be always red, like a stop sign?
So there, that is a concept that we're looking at, it's called rest on red. And so if no vehicles are at the intersection, it's red in all directions. It doesn't turn green until a call comes in.
So I think a couple of issue, we can accommodate, is basically always red, like a stop sign, okay, and another thing, we need to make sure we have ADA, so people can cross with, boop, 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 so people can go through the intersection safely. I think this is important. I, I've living over there for 20, 30 years, okay, barely see people cross, it's just really not safe, I don't cross there, okay, so. And another thing, Baranca, under school, before we put the traffic signal, we have few fatality over there. So this is something, and after the traffic signal, okay, and you have a right turn, left turn, and I think it's not going to be times, currently, we only have one or two, and it's probably damaged, so. So I think, okay, what we're trying to do is try to improve public safety, and people can cross that intersection safely, because that is heavily used, people want to walk over to Cortez Park. You want to say something? Yeah, go ahead, Councilman, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I think it's really, really important that we really do address that dip, because I'm one of those residents that live on Lark Allen and Cameron, and I see this all the time, and I'm guilty of it, going through that, you know, intersection, and you still have a little dip. And I also had a resident that said, why can't we have a sign that says dip ahead? But in this case, I think it's probably more serious, where I think we need to remedy so that people are not caught trying to run yellow lights and having a problem there.
I disagree, and, and that would be a, an important consideration, the drainage through the intersection and in correcting, not necessarily correcting, but at least addressing how the drainage is conveyed. There's design ways where we can expand the cross gutter and make the, make it more shallow, so it's not such a dip.
Yes.
It would require some adjustment on the adjacent pavement as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have, okay, Councilwoman Diaz, Lady Lopez Viado?
So this is just in general, in regards to any stoplights we have placed in the past or in the future. If there are any issues with that, like, for example, I know sometimes they say, oh, this occurs, or it makes it worse. How do you rectify that? Do you guys bring it back? I mean, I, I just wanted to, I mean, obviously, all the statistics of everything that, all the studies have been done, all, you know, the research and everything, and it is to make it better, but, you know, has there been in the past where we had that mistake, and then was like, let's remove that stop sign, I mean, stop light, and bring it back to stop sign? So I was just curious, is, has that been an issue, or?
I'm not familiar with, with it in this city. In other jurisdictions that I've worked, I've never been involved in a case where a traffic signal was installed, and then a decision was made to remove it.
So, but in, and so in your case of installing all traffic signal lights, for your, the history of your installation, has there been an issue where it's like, that was the wrong decision, or, or, you know, did it make it worse? So just on your experience?
Generally speaking, no. So there was a need for it, it met the warrants, the city found the funding and made it happen, it was installed, and not only did traffic operations improve from a flow standpoint, but it helped pedestrians get across the street, because there's additional measures to protect them and get them across the street. And generally speaking, I can't think of an example where residents decided to come back to the city and say, we don't, we don't like this, and we want the city to remove it. I, I haven't personally experienced that.
Because, I mean, obviously, safety is our biggest concern, and so, based on your experience, if it hasn't been where it came back, and that was, it made it unsafe, made it worse, and obviously, then that, that is an issue. Not being ADA compliant, of course, that is also an issue, but obviously, with the resident's concern is the dip, the parking, and the speed. You know, I'll support it if it addresses all those three, and it can address their concerns. But yeah, that's, I just wanted to, thank you.
Okay, and thank you, council, I think, okay, basically, I think you can hear what we say, and listen to the neighbors talking about their concern, and then, and we are trying to improve, not trying to create a problem for them, and then we're trying to improve for general public to safely to cross. We welcome, because a lot of park around there, we welcome people to walk around, okay, and hopefully, people can be safely walk around, okay, and with that, and with all four-way red, like a stop sign, and accommodate with the neighbors regarding, we want them to can park, can still utilize their curb, okay, corner, okay, hopefully, we can accommodate for them and find a way, and make sure the safety number one for the corners, okay, they live in that corner, okay, so how can we help them at the same time, and then help people in all the places to go through that traffic signal or the intersection safely? So, okay, if not, do we have any other comment, and otherwise, roll call, please?
Yes, I have a motion by Councilman Cantos, a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve Department Regular Matter Number 11, Engineering Review of the Intersection of Citrus Street and Cameron Avenue. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Um, sorry. I mean, if we're approving it, it's not based on this, this is not the final one, it's after all the changes or recommendation from like the, to redo of all that, right?
There will be a process, so this is approval to move forward with it, then they'll be designing it, going out for bid, and then the contract with the contractor will come back before the city council, based on the threshold, based on this amount, it will come back before the city council for approval.
All abstain.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Item passes 3-1 with one abstention, one absence.
Okay, okay, and thank you. Now we move to city council have AB 123 report? If not, okay, and the city council, any requests? Nothing? Oh, if you guys don't want to say, I want to say it, okay. I request, okay, to have a city to send a support to our neighboring city, Gendora, okay, city council, and Mike Allo, regarding their resolution to send the request to the CAG, to the council of, council of the, I think it's CT, okay, what? League of the California City, okay, thank you, thank you, okay, okay, my brain dead. Okay, and then send to require the state to look into the local control. Okay, so do I have a consensus? Okay, and then, so we all agree upon, we send a support to our neighboring city, Gendora, regarding the resolution, and send to the League of City. Okay, and any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Support of earlier, I think it's a good idea to look into a study for 35 miles an hour for that area, because of, again, to promote safety, so I request that, that staff be directed to do a study regarding the feasibility of lowering the speed limit from 45 to 35.
I will second.
Quickly, Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Thank you, no objection.
Do I have any requests, comment, anything?
I just wanted to say, I know we've hosted our six annual Student Film Festival here at Civic Center. This is the first year that it was fully ran by students, and they did a fabulous job. Students were awarded scholarships for those who submitted, but we also had student performers. And our last year's first place winner was the festival director for this year. It's a different experience, but just gotta make sure she gets recognized at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Do, thank you. Do we have any comment? If not, before I adjourn, okay, and I want to say, I want to thank the city and to put the exchange student program with our sister city, Otagoara, Japan, okay, and they came over here with their delegation, and with all the students, and inter, interactive with city, and they have a tour to see their sister city, and hopefully, okay, and we can send our children to have a exchange student program next year. Okay, I think I went to 2016, and I saw our children over there, we met over there, it's unbelievable experience for our children.